All right, we're gonna call the Murfreesboro City Council Regular Meeting, November fourteenth, two thousand and eighteen, to order. Angela, we're gonna have to call you in contempt if you, uh, we're calling the meeting to order. If I had a gavel, I would, I would slam it down.
Sergeant at arms.
That's right. No kidding. All right, um, we've got a few things that we want to talk about today, and we're gonna start out with, Russ, just give us a few minutes, we're gonna start out with City Hall Security, and we'll turn that over to Craig.
We have, and in your packets were a bid, uh, to grant a bid to, um, I'm blanking on his name, Gary, what's? Tim Rice, what's, yeah, Gary, come up and, somebody that knows what they're talking about, come up here.
Mayor, members of council, we, uh, wanna do some renovations at City Hall, create some more offices, but, but the biggest thing we wanna do is put in some security doors to actually kinda separate the employee areas from public areas, something that we needed to do for a little while. So we bid, uh, had an architect drop some plans, we bid it out, we had two bids, the low bid was Rice Construction, and the amount of, give me just a second, the amount of, the base bid was sixty-two thousand, two seventy-four, with an alternate of five thousand, eight hundred, we're asking you consider both of those, and that total amount would be sixty-eight thousand, seventy-four dollars. Uh, again, that is, uh, it'll be a two-part, uh, deal, we're actually adding on the first floor some security doors, removing some doors, and then there'll be, uh, IT element of this that will be coming, uh, which will be access through some type of FOB or some means to access for employees to get in and out of, of certain areas. We constantly find that we have people roaming down the halls, and they're actually in employee areas, and they really shouldn't be, so this measure is to actually kinda help separate that. It will be in two phases, the first phase will be putting doors in on the first floor, so when you come in the rotunda, uh, there'll be a set of doors that come down the main hallway, you'll be, there'll be actually double doors there, and you'd have to have some type of access code or a FOB to get in. Up on the upper level, you will still be able to go down the hallway, the control doors will actually be at the back, where, uh, planning is located now. Phase two of that is, once we move some people around, we wanna move planning in the room two eighteen, uh, where the front door is actually where building code is, so as you come up the, the stairs or the elevator to the second floor, uh, basically, building codes and planning will be that front door area, right there. So, uh, try to answer any questions, and ask that you consider us for approval. Mr. Tucker does have the con, the contract, I believe, a few things, you're working out on it, but, uh, should be ready to go, I think.
I expect to have the review done, if not by the end of the day tomorrow, be ready to be signed.
All right, I'll add, part of this is renovation, so as is typical when you renovate a building, it's been around for a while, we may run into things or have better ideas of how to, how to go about, so I would anticipate we'd have some change orders, we'll, of course, try and limit those as much as possible, but there are some things that we've already, since the bid was out, identified that, uh, might make a lot more sense to get done while we're doing this, so we'll, we'll keep your praise as we go forward, but, um, you know, there might be a, a few things that we add on.
And monies have been appropriated for this at the budget, uh, actually at CIP, we had actually plugged in three hundred thousand dollars, but again, there is an element that has to be, the IT element, that's not reflected in what you see today, that will be forthcoming.
So what's the timeframe, Mr. Whitaker?
Pardon?
What's the timeframe?
Timeframe?
Two weeks.
When we execute the contract, we'll try to get him in here the following week to start. All right, I make the motion to approve.
Can we, um, while we're looking at security, look into getting some kind of security coming into here for council meeting? Um, been, I've been doing a little research, and it's, it won't cost a whole lot of money, if nothing else, that, uh, we can scan people that come through the doors for council meeting. I, I'm still personally, uh, with everything going on in the world today, and even in cities, a little reluctant about, and I know the, um, the bottom part of our seating area is bulletproof, but I'm talking about still, um, maybe people coming in, that it won't be as safe as we think it is, especially when we have issues. A lot of people carry guns today, a lot of people. And just something that we can look at for the future, uh, some kind of scanning coming in, council meeting, the security.
I'll, I'll be happy to get with, uh, the police department and have them take a look at that, and then we'll bring some information back, if that's what you'd like.
You know, I, I'll, I, I get what Madeline's saying, but I'm not sure that at a council, uh, my opinion, so I'd love to hear the other council meetings, I, I'm not sure we've got police officers at each door, I think's normally what we do.
We have them at council and plan commission meetings as well, yes.
I'm, you know, if you have metal detectors, you gotta have somebody man those metal detectors, and, you know, I think we work on trying to make sure we got an open environment, but I-
And in talking to police that have manned us for council meeting, they said, sure enough, if one or two come in here with guns, it's just gonna be so much they can do with one officer in here with a gun. But, you know, it's just something just to look at, not saying we'll do it, but that's just me personally, that's just my feelings. But the rest of the council don't, if you all don't feel that we need to do it, that's fine, I just, that's my feeling. Just looking to it.
We'll be happy to take whatever direction the council-
Yeah, I accept whatever the council says.
If you have, I mean, if there's some ideas, it might, you know, if we look, it might, what be a couple of ideas? I, I probably would lean against the idea of having a, a metal detector out there, somebody manning a metal detector when they come in for council meetings, um, just, I, I don't feel, I mean, I, I just, in my personal situation, don't feel like it's a, it's that big of a threat, but I wouldn't mind seeing some kind of, I mean, if there's some sort of op, option to, you know, if we've got cameras, you know, that are out here, something like that, might even be sufficient, at least we can see who's coming in and out.
One of the, one of the things we are gonna do in this, uh, security, that's included in this, there will be a secondary means of egress out of the council chambers. As you go toward the doors, if something were to happen to the rotunda, you will be able to actually go out and through the stairwell to get out, so we are actually adding a secondary means egress out of the council chambers, and that is in this proposal, so.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Good.
We got a motion in a second.
There was a motion.
A motion in a second.
The second was Rick.
Vice Mayor Skills Harris.
This is for the sixty-eight thousand.
Oh, she called my name?
Yeah.
I'm sorry.
Yes. Mr. LaLance?
Aye.
Mr. Martin?
Aye.
Mr. Shacklet?
Oh, he's absent.
Mr. Smotherman?
Aye.
Mr. Way?
Aye.
Mayor McFarland?
Aye.
Good, thank you, we'll, uh, move on then, Mayor, that's all right, to our legislative agenda, and I'll introduce, uh, someone that most of you know, Mr. Russ Farrar, who has very capably done yeoman's work over the last two years, has it been, Russ? Last two years on our legis, three years on our legislative session? Well, one year you didn't do that, no, I'm just kidding. So he'll, uh, give us some, some ideas that, uh, on the next legislative session, you had, uh, last year's summary, um, there were some issues that we took up last year that, that, uh, Russ did, uh, a lot of work to, uh, help us with, and this year, of course, the legislative session doesn't meet until January, we have a new governor, so there's a little bit of, uh, uncertainty as to what he'll take up, and I'll turn it over to Russ and let him kinda explain his thoughts.
Well, first of all, I wanted to say thank you all for using us, and looking forward to our fourth year. I think we have done, uh, pretty much everything the city wanted and got done, uh, worked all of our channels down on the hill, and I gotta thank Craig and, uh, Mayor McFarland, I mean, just to be able to pick up the phone and call and get immediate direction. When something's going through committee and they're getting ready to vote on it, and you see an amendment floating around, it really helps to be able, uh, to do that. And you know, I don't know why, but on the way out here, I was thinking, uh, about these two kids, Billy and Bobby, and they were out playing, and Billy asked Bobby, says, "What does your dad do?", and Bobby said, "He's a CPA", and then Bobby looked at Billy and says, "What does your dad do?", and he said, "He's a lawyer", and Bobby said, "Honest?", and Billy said, "No, just the regular kind." Last year, uh, we, well, first of all, let me say, we make it a point, every week, we send to the city here, and I don't know if it's on your website, it's on our website, they can reach it specific for the city of Murfreesboro, all the bills, there's two things you get, all the bills we are watching for the city, and making sure nothing gets loose, and two, a calendar for the next week, so you will know if one of the bills we're watching for the city is on the calendar. And those are available every week, we send them out every week, and, uh, you can go to the, um, website of Ramsey Farrer in Bates, uh, and those of you that don't know, uh, former Lieutenant Governor Ramsey joined us and, uh, is now working with us lobbying, and if I could take just one second to take a personal privilege, I wanna introduce two members of our team that are here today, Ron couldn't be here, and one of the other guys couldn't, but Addison Russell and her husband Matt, uh, they both are lobbyists, Matt has been with the Ingram Group and came over to us. Addison worked for Ken Yeager in state and local, which is very helpful to us, then she worked at the Department of Commerce and Insurance during their legislation, so, uh, we're in good hands, we've got five pretty good people to work the hill now. Let me just real quickly, because we handed out to you a, two things, one is a end-of-session bill report. What this is, and you can see it's a little thick, but what this is, is every bill we were watching that we felt could possibly affect the city, and this will give you how it ended up. The second thing you have is something we tried to make readable, and that's the City of Murfreesboro End-of-Session Report, uh, where we just went through and highlighted a few of the bills that we felt like, uh, would be of interest to you. There's still a lot more in that end-of-session report, but, um, this smaller document will give you a quick look at a couple of things, and I just wanted to mention two or three, and then, uh, want to talk to you kind of where we are looking this year. Uh, one, and probably one of the most-watched bills down there, because it's been up three or four years, is this short-term rental bill, and we didn't really have a, a dog in that fight, so to speak, we got information from, uh, the officials here, but, uh, they squabbled over this bill for four years, and they came up with what I thought was a pretty good workable solution for everybody, and basically what it said was, on short-term rentals, Airbnbs, that kind of thing, if the property is already being used as a non-owner occupied Airbnb, they could continue to do that. If new ones come along and the cities adopt regulations before they come along, then they have the right to ban them. They can also be banned by homeowners associations and landlords, and the cities, if they become a nuisance, upon three criminal complaints, uh, the cities have the right to shut them down. So, it, the people that have invested in these, it kinda protects them, and it kinda protects the neighborhoods, and it's one of these things kinda like grandfathering under legislative statutes that I think will end up working itself out pretty quick, because one key element in this is that the right to be an Airbnb or a short-term rental does not travel with the property, so it's whoever owns it now is the only one that can do that. If they sell that property, when they sell it, it can no longer be a short-term rental, unless the city permits it. There was a, uh, another bill that I've talked to everybody about a little bit, called the Design Element Bill, and we finally killed that bill, but what it would have done, it would have taken, it, this started with the city of Franklin and the city, I think of East Ridge down in Chattanooga, but what it would have done is said that while you could, uh, regulate sizes, types, and all that of homes, you wouldn't have been able to regulate the design elements. So what that means in essence is, it would have put you in a situation, particularly, uh, if you go in and think you're buying a five-hundred-thousand-dollar home in a neighborhood full of all-brick homes, well, this would have allowed the developer to decide to come along if, if they got in a tight and put vinyl siding on it. So that bill was defeated, and we're glad it was, because it would have interfered a lot with our ability to have consistent, fair zoning for people. Plus, it would really eat into the HOA's, um, business. Uh, one bill that passed, and we talked a lot to, about this, we talked to your fire chief, we talked to several fire chiefs, management, this bill would make your health insurance provide up to ten visits for a first responder who shows that they have PTSD. They would still have to meet their deductible and their co-pay, but it would require that to be part of their health plan, and quite frankly, uh, to be honest with y'all in this room, if it wasn't part of the health plan, it could be part of workers' comp, so we're gonna get hit either way, and this being under the health plan, we get the co-pay, we don't get permanent impairment, uh, but we're providing treatment for that first responder that it would have gotten it otherwise. Sometimes you have to look behind the bills and think of the long-term consequences that they're gonna have, and not just go for them on, on the face of what they, uh, say. One thing I am very proud of, um, and I guess my mother would not want me to say this, but we went to bat at, right toward the end of session, Katrin had a bill in the senate, Pat Marsh had it in the house, that would have allowed liquor sales at MTSU, all, at the, um, arena and at the football stadium. We looked and looked and looked, now, we lobbied for the city of Murfreesboro, not MTSU at the time, although now they've hired us, and we're working great with them, with Dr. McPhee and them, but, um, we went to work, and this is what happened, Marsh's bill got defeated in the house, which would have killed it. So what happened was Katrin put an amendment on his bill, on, uh, a bill that another senator had for TSU in Nashville that would amend then, MTSU. Then we went to work, and we were able to get that bill as amended, passed through both the house and the senate, and I don't know who was there lobbying for them, nobody that I saw, but after talking with the mayor and Craig, we went to work, and we just barely got it out, but we got it out of the house, so now they can sell beer at, and liquor at, um, football games, basketball games, concerts, uh, that type of thing. So hopefully that will help add to the coffers of the city of Murfreesboro. There was one bill, I just, I'll be real quick on this one. Andy Holt, I don't know, y'all probably heard of Andy Holt, he's the one that got a million dollars in fines from the EPA for having hog runoff go into the waterways, but he had a bill that would have restricted smart meters. Now, I'm no technical person, I didn't even understand exactly what they were till this bill came along, but the purpose behind this bill, I, I heard, and don't take this for gospel, and, and don't take this as something I'm saying factually, but what I heard was that there are people out there that think these smart meters affect their, their brain, and the government can, uh, tell what they're thinking and, and all that, and that was why we had this bill. We defeated it, but it's the first one I've ever had that we defeated, that where we, uh, allowed the government to control what you were thinking and let them read your mind. I wanna talk to you about a couple of others, and then I wanna talk to you about what's coming up this session. There was a bill that passed that took care of where Memphis took down the statutes of Jefferson Davis and Robert E. Lee, if y'all will remember, they passed a couple of years ago, a bill that says you couldn't remove statutes of historical significance from government land, so Memphis turned it around and sold the park for two thousand dollars to a private foundation, who then promptly came in and tore the statutes down. This is to prevent that from happening, and thank goodness we don't have to deal with that here. I will say, um, one bill that we watched very closely, and it really didn't, I, I don't think it was gonna have affected us, because it did not really affect you if you had a school system, but this deannexation bill, I know y'all have heard of it, it's been up there for four years, and I mean a bloodbath. Interestingly, we worked with Bill Katrin when he was in the senate, it's hard to believe I say that in the past tense, as closely as we worked together, and let me tell y'all, uh, no politics involved, he was a great advocate for this city. I, I have never worked with a legislator representing anybody that was more loyal and helpful than Katrin and his assistant, Mickey Yearwood. But anyway, um, there was a bill, I got him to put an amendment on it, the year, not this year, but the year before. The way the bill was originally written, the people petitioning in the area to be deannexed would get to vote. Katrin's amendment, which we put on there, we require everybody in the city to get to vote on deannexation. So instead of just the area wanting out, everybody in the city, i.e., all the taxpayers that are gonna be affected, were getting to vote. We thought that would run last, well, this year, earlier this year, the bill was never moved in the house. And the real surprise was the big advocate for that bill had been a representative from Hamilton County, and he's the one that didn't move it. We got it through the senate, 'cause we didn't fight it after we got that amendment on there, you know, everybody seemed to be fine on that, so, uh, I just wanted to, um, mention that to you. Let me tell you something that's kind of, um, difficult to go into is what to expect this session. Normally, I could get up here and y'all would have to listen to me for an hour to, to talk to you, to tell you all the things and possibilities that are gonna happen this session. Right now, we have a new governor, he has set up a transition office in the old legislative plaza, uh, he's got two people that are heading up the transition, Chris Devaney, who used to be chairman of the, of Republican Party here, uh, in the state, and Butch Ely, who has historically been a Democrat, but apparently is very close to Governor Lee. Well, we don't know what their priorities are gonna be. One priority that he has said in the paper that he had was to work on the Open Records Act. And I do wanna tell you, I, because this does affect you, we are fighting that from the standpoint at the, um, public entity, uh, partnership, which is formerly the TML pool, because if they can get our records, uh, before we make bids, we can't be, uh, outbid a commercial carrier. And if, you, they don't take, they don't look at commercial carriers' records, they're not public, so we are fighting that to be able to provide that insurance, because that covers some five-hundred governmental entities in the state, and I know we have insurance with them too on our police liability, uh, remember it well, because Hobgood Elementary occurred about a week after the policy went into effect. But we are taking a strong look at that. Now, I wanna say to you this, there's gonna be a lot of things that we don't know what to expect. For instance, Andy Holt may come with another red light camera bill. You know, I don't see any changes in workers' compensation since the system that they have put in place with workers' comp judges and a workers' comp court is really just now getting in the flow of things, and you're getting a body of case law decisions, uh, for you to have some kind of standards to go by that you didn't for a long time, because, uh, a circuit court decision would not necessarily be a decision that a workers' comp court would feel that it had to fault. So with the standards changed and the court system set up, uh, I don't see anything happening with workers' comp. I don't see anything laying out there in terms of what could happen to us, in terms of governmental tort liability, as far as taking away any of the exceptions we've got, changing any of the things that we're liable for, or increasing the amounts of liability, so I don't see that out there. The liquor by the drink tax, uh, was extended for one more year. We pretty well let, uh, the counties and TML handle that, 'cause it hasn't really been, it won't affect us, it doesn't affect cities with schools, and I'm not aware of any suits that have been brought in Murfreesboro, but we've had them all over the state that we've been fighting. So you say, Russ, what do you think's gonna happen? Well, I think you're gonna see two or three things that are gonna come to the forefront. Number one, I think you're going to see, as hard as he tries, I think Governor Lee is going to have to kinda get the feel of and get used to the governor's office. He's gonna be in office less than a month, when he's gonna have to come with a budget of several, several billion dollars, and justify the things that he's coming with that budget for. He's gonna be in office less than thirty days before he has to give the state of the state address, and he's been quoted in the paper saying he's gonna go across the state and give that in nine different places. And his legislative team is going to be inundated with things that they're gonna be looking at, that they either are gonna support, or they're gonna fight. And they don't have much time, I think it's a total of about seventy-five days from the election to when he's sworn in as governor. So I think you may see some things, not just from him, but I think you're gonna see from the legislature, some open records, uh, legislation, and, you know, uh, what was that Beach Boys song, "God Only Knows"? I don't know what the Legislative Records Committee is look, is gonna be looking at, they've had, I think we've been to three hearings now, that they've had on open records, and, uh, my understanding, and again, we're going to meet, uh, Governor Ramsey and myself are gonna meet in the very near future with the transition team, but, um, right now, what we are understanding is, they're looking, rather than changing exceptions, adding to or taking away, they're looking more at how a governmental body, not just cities and counties, state, everybody, can accommodate people, uh, as far as making the records more readily available and lower the cost. And there are plenty of advocates up there right now that are explaining, you know, sometimes you get people come in, you can get somebody in Murfreesboro that wants to see, "I wanna see the record of every arrest officer so-and-so who's been here thirty years has made." I mean, there are some things that are totally unreasonable, and I think there's gonna have to be a balance somewhere. And a nut, a big issue on that is the police video cameras, where they're wearing the cam, cameras on their suits now, and you have thousands of hours of nothing, and ten minutes of something happening. And the storage of those, the availability of those are going to be a big issue. I do think that, uh, the budget may be a little tighter this year, I know housing starts have slowed down, the market slowed down a little bit, but I think there is going to be a huge fight, and I don't know how it will come out, 'cause I don't know what's gonna be presented. Charles Sargent, who was chairman of finance from, uh, Williamson County, uh, was chairman of the Finance Committee, and was always good for us to work with, and would listen to us and, uh, work with us, well, he had gotten on board wanting to look at changing the split between cities and counties. He passed away two days- He passed away two days ago, but I think that you are going to see something brought from the counties, and hopefully, uh, those of us who lobby for the cities and the city's organization will be on top of this as far as the taxes go. Obviously, we want to be fair, but the first reports don't look too fair to me as far as what they're trying to do to the cities. So we're gonna be watching that very, very closely. But again, you've got so many moving parts. You're gonna have the Department of Revenue, you're gonna have the Treasury, you're gonna have the Comptroller's Office, you're gonna have the Governor's Office, and you're gonna have the legislature. And then you're gonna have the, uh, uh, Association for the Cities, uh, TML. You're gonna have, uh, the County Services Association. And then you're gonna have all the cities, uh, like us that have lobbyists that are gonna get in, get into it. So it's gonna be hard to tell you right now what those moving parts are gonna be. I can tell you this much. I'm not gonna make a guarantee, because I can't do that by law, but I can tell you this. We are going to fight as hard as anybody over there can fight to see that the cities do not get hurt in this. You've got, you know, you've got all this stuff. You've got Amazon and Wayfair and companies I don't even know about, 'cause I don't keep eBay. I don't know about all of them, but you've got all those, and now that's gonna have to start being computed in and how that's gonna be split. And, you know, we, it's not fair to take that, all that tax money from the cities, because we're losing it from our brick and mortar, uh, businesses, which basically are city businesses. And you've got to, in my mind, account for that. And obviously, uh, Mayor McFarland and Craig know that I'm not gonna do anything without running it by them thoroughly, but I am telling you, we're gonna be watching that very closely. Lastly, let me close by saying this. Uh, Governor, uh,-elect Lee has said that he wants to fini, the way he put it was finish what Governor Haslam had started doing with education, what he had started doing as far as the infrastructure. And that's gonna be interesting to see how that plays in to everything else. At the bottom line to me, folks, is that he's gonna find out, he's gonna have to set some priorities and go with those priorities. He can't run with everything this first session. Now, I'll be, I hope I haven't talked too long. Uh, I'm sure Craig or the mayor will let me know, but, uh, does anybody have any questions that they would like to ask me, uh, about the upcoming session? And like I say, this is an odd time, because with a new governor coming in, we don't even know who's gonna be in the cabinet. We don't know who his legislative liaisons are gonna be. We don't know his position on bills. You know, it's, it's just, uh, a guessing game. And I've given you my best guesses right there, so if anybody's got any questions, I'll be glad to answer them. Well, I see I really stoked your interest. Uh, I do wanna say this. Thank y'all for letting us represent you. Uh, we do our very best, and I appreciate the opportunity. Craig, mayor, thank y'all, city council. Yes, sir, you have a question?
You stoked.
Oh.
Let, let's, you, you mentioned several things that I was interested in, and I, and I think a lot of it's politics, to be honest, because I mean, we, we just don't know the political changes and the ramifications that a new senator representing this area and stuff are going to.
And see, that's gonna be another big change. I'm glad you mentioned, we've got a new, you know, Bill Ketron was the caucus chair. That's the third highest office in the, in the senate, behind the lieutenant governor and the majority leader. And now we're starting off all over again. We're gonna have a new caucus chair. We're gonna even have a new majority leader, because Mark Norris, who was the majority leader, has been confirmed as a federal judge in Memphis and has resigned. I'm sorry, I just thought I'd throw that in.
I agree with you. It, uh, the, um, the, the senate bill 1500, uh, House Bill 1939, uh, I think it's on page three of the document that you handed out here.
Give me one second, I'm not as quick as I used to be. You said which bill now?
One second from the bottom. The, the, the new law that allows county commissioners to carry firearms in buildings where judicial buildings or proceedings are taking place. We have judicial, uh, meetings taking place in this particular building. I was curious as to how that made it all the way through, and it looks like it's already passed the house and, uh, it's been sent to the governor.
Right. Well, I think it's been passed into law. And what it does, uh...
I get what it does. How did the city get left out of that, though? How come that doesn't cover city council members and city halls as well?
Politics. We worked that out, because, uh, the rationale was that, uh, if I'm not mistaken, Matt, you're Addison, can correct me if I'm wrong, but if I'm not mistaken, it was felt like all the state courts, circuit courts, chantry courts and all that, uh, are held in the county courthouse. And the only courts that would be held in a city building would be those of, I think it's $50 or less, something like that, as far as, uh, the fines. And if you read it carefully, it says they can't be carried in when the proceedings are going on, is what it says. But let me tell you, I'm not going to, to beat the book on this at all. You are not going to stop a gun bill. They are letting them take guns into theaters, into, uh, public arenas. Uh, they let them take guns into bars. I mean, they can take a gun anywhere they want to, and it just keeps growing.
Well, uh, and, and obviously, you have a different viewpoint of it than myself, because I think that it's okay to carry guns anywhere you want to, as long as you're a law-abiding citizen and use that gun and you're properly licensed to have that gun.
I am concerned about it where, for instance, you have small children or a church building or something like that. Uh, you know, that's where it bothers me.
Was the city.
But we, we've taken the position, we have not fought any of these gun bills for, on behalf of the city.
But, but as a city, we have tried to mitigate that problem by having ordinances that protect our parks where children are present.
And see, that's different than a lot of cities have.
But, but I think that, you know, I, I'm okay with being proactive in protecting the kids and making sure that, but if there's a bad guy with a gun, I would always hope that there's a good guy with a gun.
I, I couldn't agree.
So, it, uh, so, so I was a little concerned that the municipalities had been left out of that, but it, uh...
In a way, they were, in a way, they weren't, though. They weren't, by not addressing them, there is another bill, and I don't think I put it in this section, but it's in this big thing I gave you that says, and Addison, correct me if I'm wrong, but I believe it says that you can carry guns into any, uh, municipal building unless you have two things. Uh, this is assuming you're, you're permitted to carry. Unless you have metal detectors at every door and signs up. Otherwise, you can carry a gun anywhere you want to in a municipal building, and that's already the law. That's one, another reason they didn't hit that, because it had already passed. So, I mean, and what it's doing really with the counties, treating them more like the cities are treated now.
It, uh, I, I get what they're doing. I mean, and, and of course, with, in our case, we've got a judicial building where,
Right.
a county commissioner probably has business occasionally, and, and I think they're trying to protect those county commissioners there.
Also, I think they're trying to protect, you, every once in a while, you hear somebody going off on a judge or something, you know? I think they're trying to protect that, that's why they're talking about judicial proceedings.
And there's no place for it in the courtroom, I, I agree with that.
You know, I think that what we're gonna see, in my opinion, at the legislature moving forward, we're, we're, we're lucky in Rutherford County that we've got such a good relationship. Um, I mean, I can't tell you how many good conversations we've had with Mayor, Mayor Burgess since he's taken office and have been really proactive to things that we're, we're working on that, um, you know, previously, we didn't necessarily have that ability. Um, but I think there's a sentiment in the legislature now between county and city. And that's what, we spent last year the majority of our time wo, working on things that would hurt, uh, cities to the detriment of, of counties.
It's been interesting, Mayor. There've been a lot of articles I've read about, they're asking the question really, what is going on across the country with legislatures going after municipal governments? There's been a, a, a lot written about it. But one thing we have here is with, with Mayor Ketron over there and with Mayor McFarland and Craig over here, uh, you know, I think we're gonna be able to work very well together.
Yeah.
Very well.
The biggest threat for us next year financially is that internet sales tax.
Yeah.
And that could, this year, if that had passed, I think the number to us, just on our budget, would have been $2 million, an immediate hit that we would have, we would have had. And the, the issue with that, the majority of your internet sales tax that is generated is generated in all your municipal districts.
Right.
So I mean, that, that's where, um, we'll, you know, hopefully be able to work on that.
But I mean, all the conversations that you had there about the, um, annexation and everything, that was simply counties saying, we don't want annexation taking place in our counties.
Well, what it...
The municipalities.
Well, this case is...
What it was, was...
The dean, that...
Yeah, this...
Chatting, there's a, there's a guy, I, I forget his name, in Chattanooga.
Carter.
Carter.
Yeah, Mike Carter.
That we actually met, yeah, met with here, uh, some time ago. But, um, the, the, the danger of allowing, i- if someone is not getting the services that the city promised them that they would get, which we have those services that we have to have the public hearing on, on our services that we provide, then I get if someone's upset with not getting trash pickup, fire service, police service. But in, in that case, the bill that was going through would literally, even though someone was getting the services that they had been promised, would allow them, if we extended infrastructure, if we built roads, if we did all of these different things, that was the benefit to that neighborhood, it would allow them to vote in that neighborhood to deannex.
Right. And, and I might say, adding on what the mayor's saying, it's not really, on this bill was not really the counties. It was to let those people that live in that area that had been annexed after 1998, I think, uh, petition to have a vote, uh, and if they voted to deannex, they would then go back solely as part of the county. And then there were financial repercussions every which way. But the way the bill was amended by Senator Ketron was instead of only the people in the area to be deannexed voting, it would have required the whole city to vote.
Right. And, 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 and that's actually Representative Mike Carter from Uta One.
Right.
He's not from Chattanooga. But, uh, he, uh, but that was, his whole opposition was, he didn't wanna be annexed by Hamilton County.
Oh, I, I, I...
And, and so, so he's an urban representative. I mean, he's, he's not representing the municipality.
Oh, I know that.
And he had purely promised the people in his community, there will be no annexation if I get elected. And that's, that he's, that's politics.
Yeah.
But, but at the same time, the bad part is, is Nashville's following. And, and, and they're agreeing with some of the comments that he's making, which are purely, you know, I guess if you're purely an urban state, you, that would be okay. But, but, or, or, if you had a rural state where you didn't have municipalities, it, it would be a situation that you'd probably say it was okay. But with Tennessee, and especially Murfreesboro growing like it currently is, it's almost impossible without having huge increases in density to have the population growth that we're experiencing. And I hope that's what you can follow up on with the governor is, and his staff, is the need for the monies that are being appropriated for roads as far as highways and infrastructure. Murfreesboro needs it, because we are experiencing growth.
Absolutely.
And there are certain areas in the state that aren't experiencing growth, and they do not need the funding at the level that we need it, because we are in a dire strait when it comes to traffic in Murfreesboro.
Believe me, I am very well aware of that. Senator, it's, it's gonna help too, uh, having Shane Reeves up there now.
I agree.
Don White's just getting started in the senate, but, uh, having Ketron over as the county executive, he still has a lot of respect and carries a lot of respect. So that's gonna be a second, uh, advocate that we have up there. And if there's ever anything you all need or you want that we can help you with, all you gotta do is call. I think Shane and Craig will both let you know that we try to respond almost immediately to any request or any issue, uh, that you have.
Russ, we appreciate your hard work.
I, I thank you. Appreciate it.
Russ, councilmembers, I can, can tell you, and, and I think Craig can as well. Craig really, even before he was city manager, was the lead on dealing with Russ on a lot of different things. But, um, Russ absolutely is always looking for the best interest of Murfreesboro and making sure that we sort of are know, knowing what's, what's going on, so.
We try our very best. I just appreciate the confidence in us.
Yeah, and I think it even, it even helps that now that MTSU has hired, hired y'all, that, uh, 'cause really, the issues that MTSU are dealing with, we're dealing with. So Russ, thank you very much.
Thank you all very much.
All right, we'll move to park planning direction. Who's taking this one?
Thank you, uh, mayor, members of council. As you know, a lot has changed recently about the Blackman Park and, um, looking at all the options when it comes to soccer and a lot of things that are happening in the community. So, um, our goal, uh, as it stands right now, is to really look at some of the park properties we have on the west side of town and see what would be the best use for those properties. Um, we, we've come to the point where we're looking at, uh, two places. We've got the 120 acres that we've been planning as Blackman Park, and how we're gonna incorporate whatever the best use is for that, um, a park element, combined with commercial, whatever that looks like. Uh, we started doing some research on another piece of property that the city owns. You see it up on the screen, it's 160 acres off of Highway 96. So, um, what we're looking at is, uh, the possibility of taking, uh, some of the big amenities that we were planning on the 120 acres and looking at this site as a potential location, uh, for some of those amenities. So, uh, we're not seeking anything necessarily specific other than to get some guidance from you. We would like, uh, to pursue doing some due diligence on this property to see if it would make sense, and we could do it in a cost-efficient manner. Um, I'm gonna use this tool here, but this is the property order. There are two properties that were combined to make 160 acre tract. We do have some constraints preliminarily. We've got a colonial pipeline that goes straight through. We think we can work with that. We've got some preliminary designs, just seeing how elements would fit on this site. Um, we have the potential to add some commercial, um, slots where we can sell on the front part close to Highway 96. So, um, like I said, uh, what we wanna do is just open up the discussion, uh, about this property and see if you had any suggestions, thoughts. We would like to pursue, like I said, doing some due diligence, doing some research about this property specifically, uh, so we can get in deeper with that.
I mean, you, you guys are gonna basically, I mean, I think all you're asking for us is to say to you, yeah, we think it's okay for y'all to go ahead and, and start looking at what some, some good options may be, i.e., if we take the baseball fields from Veterans Parkway and move them down to this property, what would it look like, and would that be able to work? And would it be cheaper to do that here versus there?
And seeing what the property looks like, seeing what the drainage, um...
Yeah.
That was a big problem that we were running into on the other side, making the very expensive park. We'll still have some issues that we have to overcome here. But that's what we wanna do, is just look and see what the possibilities are here and see how we can incorporate those elements. Uh, also get from you the type of elements you would like to see. Uh, we've done a lot of planning on the other piece of property, and fortunately, we'll be able to take a lot of that planning when it comes to architecture, um, some of the structural things that we've done, some of the programming elements, and move that over to this location if that's what this council, uh, desires. Um, it's our recommendation that we really look at this piece of property. I think we can, um, make a functional park on this 160 acres.
Yeah, and I think we've got, you know, we've been through a couple of years worth of public input and, and discussion from us. I think we got a pretty good idea of what features we wanna see in the western part of Murfreesboro. It's just a matter of what would be the smartest and most effective way to use the two properties to get those features over there, right?
Sure.
Is that, is that the idea?
Sure. The, the, right now, it's our goal to, you know, make, uh, two essential park sites, to put a park element on that 120 acres, um, however that ends up. But really, look at this property, it's a little bit bigger, a little bit easier to build on in some ways.
Yeah.
Um, and we've got more, you know, unique opportunities here that we don't have at the other site. Um, and really look and get our designer to start looking at this pro, you know, property, uh, as function comes into play and see what we can put there. We know the elements, I think, that we want to put there, but we'd be glad to listen to these suggestions you have. Um, but really just start our due diligence on this piece of property to see if it's a functional space for a park.
But to be clear, we're not talking about taking everything that we've talked about at Veterans Parkway at this point and moving everything over to this property. We're talking about just looking at options.
Looking at options. Um, there's been a lot of work done on the, uh, the other property that I think we could... There's been a lot of work done on the, the other property that I think we could, we can switch over to this location, but we would take a, a good look and just see what's available, what opportunities present themselves on this piece of property.
I, I think you're going in the right direction from, at least from a parks and recreation standpoint of trying to provide services more in pocket parks than one massive park that's just jammed full of things.
Sure.
And, and plus, this property has some, some pretty large advantages on drainage and stuff like that, that the other property would need much more work done to the property in order to make it usable for some of the facilities. I do think it's very important that the public understands though, that, at least from my perspective, is we are going to continue to pursue at least a walk-in trail, a playground, maybe even a splash pad facility at the Blackman area, so that it's still going to be a park, but there's probably a better use for the majority of that property than, than for it to be park property.
I, I'm sorry to interrupt.
And, and as, as well, this piece of property here would be a more efficient and a more effective type property to use, perhaps for ball fields or something like that because of just the lay of the land. So, so, I mean, I agree, I, I think that this is something you need to look into and see if there's not an opportunity that it, you know, even from a financial standpoint, it's just much more cost-efficient to, to develop some of this land as opposed to the other land.
We can't say that for sure, but I think it's worth looking into to see if we can develop this park in a more cost-efficient way. The other site, we're, we're talking, we've got like a couple of different things going on at one time, like you said, but we are looking at what elements we can keep there and make it more, you know, pocket community park.
Right. But, but I don't want to send the message that we're abandoning one park and transitioning everything to that other park because that's not, at, at least that's not the intent that I have for the property, and every council member can speak for themselves, but I think it's very important that we use, use both properties, it, it spreads out our assets and, and it allows both parks the opportunity to have phased growth as opposed to just trying to fill it up all at one time.
Nate, is it safe to say a good summary would be that we're researching between the two sites, which one would be most cost-effective to be able to get a park on the ground as quick as possible that we can afford?
That's one of the elements, which, cost-effectiveness, you know, a lot of things when developing a park, but that's one of the major things, and then just location just in general, which is the best use of, of each property.
And planning from a broader perspective, not just a park perspective as well, I mean, we've talked about commercial property and the, and the highest and best use for that 80, 840 and, and Veterans Parkway, some of that land over there leaving a substantial amount in a park because it's important out there. But from a park planning, and I don't want to put Nate in a bad position because he's focused on parks, but I think there's a broader perspective that we are wanting to incorporate into it, so, I mean, I apologize, I stepped out for a second and I told Nate I'd kind of intro, intro the whole thing, I just left him hanging, but, you know, we went from, we went from, you know, a park at 840 and utilizing all that land to utilizing part of it for another facility, part of it commercial, and then utilizing this, so we want to make sure before we spend a lot of money on planning and having consultants start to plan things that council is okay with putting this into park land because it wasn't before, and then having a portion of that other land put into park land as well with some commercial element in there that will frankly help pay for all this and, and advance it on. This was, this was taken off the budget this year, not this one, the map's up on another piece parcel, but the 840 was taken off the budget this year because we, we didn't have the capacity for it, and it'll probably be a few years before it comes back unless there's another financing, financing mechanism, and so that's part of what we want to look at from a comprehensive standpoint.
Nate, I think also, as we look at 840, because, you know, we did promise those people a park over there, and they expect some of those amenities that we had talked about, but I also understand too, that we've got some commercial development, we want to put them in that park. So, if, just like Eddie said, you know, if that could be a good small pocket park that has trails, whatever, splash parks or something, and we, it could be a cheaper park, I think that's what we need to look at.
We, we've heard loud and clear from the, the community, and I think there are some certain elements we definitely want to include on that 840 property.
Thank you.
If, if it's your desire, we would move forward, looking at this, doing our due diligence, looking at water, looking at drainage, then also turn our designer loose on looking at commercial opportunities as well and where those could be best located.
Okay. Thanks, Nate.
Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you.
All right, we'll now move to expansion of city core overlay.
Mr. Anthony.
Yes. Thank you. While I'm putting this in, I'll tell you that we had a great meeting this morning with our local development, community, and design professionals. We had about 50 in attendance to talk about our 2019 submittal calendar. One of the things we want to do in our department is continue to build upon the work with, with working with our developers and keeping lines of communication open, and I'm very grateful for the work that Gary did while he was director and will try to continue that. And following along that line, the city core overlay expansion project, I'm just gonna go through a few things with it, I hope that you had a chance maybe to look through the electronic packet and see some of the, the information that we put out, it's a very lengthy ordinance, so I don't expect anybody to read it, but hopefully the guidebook maybe was a little bit more helpful to you. With the city core overlay, right now, as you know, a couple of years ago, we had the historic bottoms and North Highland corridor studies, we don't want those just to sit on shelves and gather dust, that's what happens a lot with studies like that. We actually want to see what we can do zoning-wise to help with implementing those studies and preparing the ground, getting things ready for future development in those areas. So, we're looking at our city core overlay as a, as a way to do that. The other ideas are, are promoting form compatibility, I'll talk a little more about that, and then identifying some uses that are maybe not compatible with a downtown-type area. Our current CCO is an underutilized overlay district. The one thing that it does really, interestingly, is that it's one of our few zoning districts that does regulate form to some extent with, and compatibility. With our current CCO, your building setbacks have to be based on the building setbacks of the buildings adjacent to you, it's our only zoning district that does a comparable thing like that. Every other zoning district we have, there's a minimum setback line and you have to, you have to meet that, but with the CCO, it's actually based on what's surrounding you, and so we want to build off of, off of that kind of thing. Our current CCO is this area highlighted in blue, you can see it's a really small area down in this, down in this orange area, not a whole lot of development actually right now in that area, but it provides a really good building ground for being able to, to expand that zoning district as opposed to creating a whole new overlay zoning district, utilizing one that already exists. So, we're looking to expand that CCO to this entire area that is, that is in different colors, so that blue area, that's the historic bottoms area, the green area is the North Highland area, and then the, the orange area encompasses that existing CCO, and then that pink area up to the, to the top left is the, the other area that we're adding in, that's gonna be your North Church Street corridor, Walnut Street, Maple Street. So, the way that we would like to approach this overlay, it's more of a design-based overlay, right now, we've identified 10 development pattern subareas, seven of those were already proposed as part of the historic bottoms and North Highland studies. So, if you go back through those books that Reagan Smith left us with, you'll see, they talk about urban transitional zones, suburban transitional zones, downtown, mixed-use nodes, those kinds of, those kinds of areas. We've identified three additional pattern subareas that we think could help, especially with these two, two areas that we've added into the, into the study area. These development patterns would regulate form, that would include things like building height setbacks and build two lines, I'll come back to that in a second, lot coverage and parking location. The development patterns can also regulate use, so certain uses would not be allowed even if the underlying zoning allows those uses, otherwise the underlying zoning would, would govern. So generally, of these 10 development patterns, the more urban development patterns would allow higher buildings, shallower setbacks and greater lot coverage, while the suburban would do the opposite. For all of the development patterns, we're proposing that height must be compatible with the surroundings and would not be able to be more than 50% higher than any adjacent building. So, the idea there is that if the, the highest adjacent building was two stories, your building shouldn't go over three stories, and that would promote compatibility, but what that would mean is that the next building that comes in next to you could go up to four and a half stories, and, and so that's the way that you can, that you can start increasing density and increasing height, but do it contextually, not out of place, not out of character. And in most of our development patterns that we're proposing, the setbacks are determined by the average of all structures on the block face, so again, it's looking to be compatible with what's around you as opposed to just setting a standard. Right now, there are certain areas around downtown where buildings are only 10 or 15 feet back from the street, yet our zoning, zoning districts would require a new building to be 30 or 40 feet back from the street, and that's the kind, kind of thing that we would like to avoid with this, with this overlay. Some of the unique qualities that, that we've, that we've put in are utilizing build-two lines, that means that we're focusing more on pulling buildings up to the street as opposed to setting them back from the street. Here's one that I would, I would love to get feedback on, in areas where underlying zoning allows duplexes, not requiring a shared wall. In Nashville, you would refer to that as a tall skinny. Here in Murfreesboro, we have a couple of examples of that, I think Mr. Burns has come through with, with one of those maybe on Maple Street, if I remember right, but he did it through planned development as opposed to buy right. If, if you were to take our proposal in the future and, and approve it, this would allow buy right to, to do that. We would like landscaping standards that are flexible and allow alternative planning arrangements where appropriate. Right now, the existing CCO standards have sort of one-size-fits-all landscaping, in a downtown area, one size does not fit all, you have different development types, different lot sizes, lot configurations, so you may not need these large buffers necessarily between uses always. The CCO would encourage mixed-use development, it would require compatible building materials. The other thing I want to talk about is the special parking standards, right now, the, the existing CCO has reduced parking standards compared to the rest of the city. We are working with Neil Schaefer, Dana Richardson is, is gonna help us work through some numbers on this, and hopefully his study would sort of parallel this, if, if, if you determine that this is okay to start moving this forward through community meetings and such, Dana's study would sort of march along with us, and we would not be comfortable putting anything in front of you with reduced parking requirements until he, until his study indicates that that, that that would work and that that would be okay. And the last thing is that this ordinance would allow one-time extension or reconstruction that would not have to comply with CCO standards. One of the things that we're concerned about is that anytime that you impose new zoning standards on an area, if, if a homeowner or business owner wants to upgrade their building, but doing so would prompt them to have to follow the new standards, they may simply be inclined to let their building continue in its current state. Its current state, of course, will deteriorate and dilapidate over time, and we would much rather have buildings upgraded, even if they don't meet the exact letter of the, of the law on new standards. So, that would be something very unique to this, to this overlay. I think what we would like from you is some indication as to whether this is something worth pursuing. We've, we've written an ordinance, we have a draft, a trial balloon, if you will, that we can put out, that we can take out to the community, that we can take to our downtown business owners and circulate, get their feedback, but we don't want to go through that process unless the city council thinks that, that this is a worthwhile pursuit. I will step back and open that up for, for discussion or any questions that you may have.
I wanted, or, Anthony, one of the things that I would comment about is, you know, this is gonna be, to, to read through this and understand it completely is, you know, it's a ton of information.
Yes.
And so, there's a lot of things that can get kind of lost in the shuffle when we have a document that's this big. You know, one of the things that I would, you know, I, I wouldn't want to be a part of as a, as a city council person, that, you know, we do something that 10 or 30 years from now changes substantially the downtown area from what's attractive about the downtown area. You know, some of the things that I think about is when you're coming up West Main, you can see the, the courthouse up there, you know, kind of on the rise up there, and it's split up and it's pretty, and, you know, that's the kind of stuff that I think when people come here, they look at that and they go, "Man, that's pretty dagum cool," you know, I mean, this is a nice, nice little area. And even if we stagger buildings out, if this applies, you know, where we're, you know, where we basically encircle the, you know, the downtown area into bigger, taller buildings, and, and I appreciate the 50% deal, that certainly sounds like it tries to have some kind of capacity to keep it from just getting, looking like Central Park where you've just got that encircled by a bunch of giant buildings. You know, so I guess you guys are the professionals, and I guess what I want to say is, you know, please put as much thought as you can into, you know, some, some appropriate area around the downtown, you know, the main downtown area right here, that would be fairly protected to keep it what I think is attractive, and, and sometimes that, you have to back away from, is 50% the right number for, you know, you gotta back away to whether some of those bigger picture things we want to protect, and are there things in here that would, that would put that at risk, okay? And y'all are the professionals, you know that better, and you're gonna be intimately involved with every word in these documents. So, that'd just be my input on it, I just, you know, again, I think we get caught up in urbanization and all that kind of stuff, and that's fine, there are some, you know, some elements of that that certainly are appropriate and good and beneficial, but, you know, when you listen to what people say about our downtown area, about Franklin's downtown area, other, look, face it, kind of small-town downtown areas that, that's attractive, it isn't that it's surrounded by giant buildings and we've crammed as many people in here as we can get, it's typically, man, it's kind of, you know, you hear the word quaint, or, you know, that kind of stuff mentioned in that sentence. So, I, I just hate to destroy that, and, and if you'll take that into account as you build these things, it would be, I think, something that I could support rather than not support.
I, I appreciate that, and I definitely think, there's a lot that you said there that we'll, we'll definitely look into, and view sheds, that's one of the things that, that you're pushing out there, very important. I, I distinctly remember as a, as a kid, growing up in West Tennessee, being told in a, in a class that we were gonna come visit the state capitol, and I distinctly remember being told that there was a state law, whether it was a law or not, I don't know, it may have just been an, an agreement, right? But that there, there was some regulation that our state capitol would always be visible to both east and west along Interstate 40, and I always appreciated that, and growing up, whenever we would travel to east Tennessee or something, I always appreciated being able to see the state capitol every time I came through, and recently, I've noticed I'm not seeing it so well anymore. So, whatever agreement was reached, I don't know that it's still there. I definitely understand and appreciate that concern, and Diana and I will do everything in the world that we can to, to get the wording, to, to, to protect those, those kinds of ideas.
And I'm only one opinion up here, but that'd just be, that'd be my, you know, my opinion, okay?
Yeah, and I'll, I'll just comment, Don, I, I did a quick pass through it, and, you know, I appreciate the sensitivity to trying to create opportunity to spur some activity, to rejuvenate some of those places without taking the governor off of it from the standpoint of both parking and, you know, there's a 75%, if you're adding 75% square footage to that in there, I thought that made sense. When you're talking about the height and the pullback or pulling closer to the street, I mean, I thought it was very thoughtful, and I think it's a great document to work from, so my compliments to you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Are there any other questions? Don, I have one comment, this is aside from this discussion, and really, it could be under other business, but really like to get the council, this is sort of the forum to do this. My opinion, whenever we have a developer who's coming for a planned development change, there needs, this, again, this is my opinion, but there needs to be a substantial reason why that that plan is initially changed. You know, we went through 2010 to 2000, or 2009 to 2015, in every council meeting and planning commission meeting, we were changing the planned development because, you know, Three Rivers was changed numerous times, when, times when it went into bank control, and so, if a developer is bringing us a planned development change just to get more density- is bringing us a planned development change just to get more density and there's nothing changed on the plan as far as amenities or open space, it's just, hey, we want to get more density because we want to offer a different price point. Well, in my opinion, that's not a valid reason to change a planned development. And I don't know how, I wanted to open that up for the council members, but, you know, the discussion we had the other night when we're talking about, you know, adding 40-plus percent to a development based upon just, hey, we want to offer a different price point, I wanted to see if there's something that has changed, if that, if we're going down the right path on that.
I'll tell you some of the, just some of the things that passed through my mind over the last few years is, as it relates to changes on, on planned developments is, you know, some timeframe, some kind of reference to timeframe. I mean, you know, if, if you just got it approved eight months ago and, you know, that, that there might need, you know, versus one that you had approved that was approved 10 years ago and now you're coming in with, you know, doing some fine tuning tweaks at the end kind of a thing, I mean, that's, that seems a little different to me, but, and to me, if you just got this thing approved and now all of a sudden just the terms of the sale are getting wonky and you want to come in and try to change it so you can, I mean, you know, we know what is happening there sometimes, it's just, hey, we're just trying to change the terms of the transaction that are behind the PUD change. You know, that, that's a, you know, I, I kind of think, look, if you've done that within the last year or two, we, you know, this is adding, this is adding a lot of work and cost and taking away resources from doing a lot of things inside of your staff that aren't really for a reason that, that you, we, we literally point to that says, well, this is how this is going to benefit the community and the city. Okay? And I think maybe that's part of what he's saying, but, you know, I, I think the timeframe would be important. I guess one thing I would, I would add to that, that, that might play a part in that, how we might build that. And, you know, look at, some of it to a certain degree as it relates to you guys is money. I mean, I hate to say it that way, but it just is. It, it takes resources every time, from you guys every time something like that comes in. And for three, four, five or 600 bucks, whatever that is, I mean, you know, to go through an entire planning, planning commission, public hearings, the sessions y'all are putting in, I mean, you know, I don't see how 600 bucks is even remotely close to the amount of work, number of hours you guys are putting into that before it even gets to us. So anyway, I, maybe that has something to do with it too.
Thank you, thank you for that.
I agree with Shane too. We can talk about it later, but I think what we start, need to look at what's best for the city when, when people are coming back for a change. Because sometimes we don't look what's best for the city. Okay, more density for this developmental spot, but is this really best for the city?
Yeah, and, well, sorry.
No, 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 go ahead, go ahead.
And I think the spirit of what Shane's saying, you know, in that one discussion we had where we were talking about a 40% increase, you know, if, if I'm thinking of the same thing that you're mentioning, you know, the left turn that we talked of about out of that site, I mean, that's enough to scare you with the density that was there, much less adding anything else to it. Because if you've actually been to that site, I mean, you're, you're basically on that overpass when you're turning left out of there. And so, I mean, that's a tough, that's a tough situation. But on the other side of that, I think in the same spirit of the reason we're talking about trying to find highest and best use with the, you know, veteran site, veteran sparkway site, you know, we've got great infrastructure there that would support commercial use. I think where we have good infrastructure and there's opportunity to create a lower price point product, because I know we need some more of that, we should be looking equally for those opportunities, but not just for the sakes of, of changing it to be changed in because we can get more density, so.
And that's where that land use, I mean, you know, that's where that land use map is supposed to be handy, right? That we have that stuff in place where we're saying, this is where we have infrastructure set up for this. Where you're asking for it is not where we have the infrastructure set up. So we agree that we need it and we want it and we just can't handle it at this spot at this time.
Well, one, one thing to add to what Councilmember Wade just said and what's driving, I think, some of these changes is an idea that they can capture more of the market or a different part of the market or everything else. But they're not really, we're not, we're not looking at the full impact, as Councilmember Wade said, on the city because they're, the market's not fully capitalized into that cost. The biggest thing is impact fees. We've worked, we've talked a little bit about impact fees, but the impact of higher density isn't being reflected in, in the price of the product. So we're really not accommodating the full market when we're, when we're talking about a change that increases density. So we're, we are looking at that. You'll, you'll see that probably in December. We have a study on what surrounding communities are doing, which all have impact fees, we don't, to talk about what, you know, impact, a density, increase in density would have on roadways, schools, parks, all of those things. So I think you see, you'll see a material difference in those type of things coming back if it's fully reflective of what an increase in density would do. Whether they're trying to capture a lower price point or not, that's fine. I mean, that's market dictated, but it should be a full, fully encompassing all the costs that impacts the entire city.
Just one more comment from the bearded side of the table here. The...
I hope that we don't send the message that we're opposed to planned development though because I, I had somebody talk to me the other day and they had mentioned a proposed development with the planning department and, and had kind of gotten run into something because the message that Shane was sent was we're opposed to planned development was the way they took it. And that wasn't what you said and I told him, I said, listen, I was in that meeting and that's not what Shane said. But the, but the perception was that there is a perfect place for planned development and, and there are certain situations where there's transitional zones that may not be transitional zones today because they may just be an open field. But if you have commercial development on a property that is zoned commercial that is not developed today and you have residential area spaced one lot away from it, then the perfect transitional zone would be in between those where you would have a buffer to protect the neighborhood that would not be quite as intrusive to the neighborhood as commercial, but at the same time would make a good buffer next to the commercial property. We've got a scenario taking place in town and, and the guy, he, he said, well, I've been told that you are against planned development now. And I said, no, we're not against planned development. This is the perfect example of where that would work and, and have a very positive impact on not just the city, but that particular part of town. So it, I know there's, you know, it's, it's hard to chisel in stone and say this is, this is exactly how we need to do it because there's, there are exceptions to where planned development is a great thing and then, and of course, the change of planned development simply for the reason of increase in density. I, I, I get where you're coming from and that's, that's not what we're intending to do with, with what we're seeing over and over and over again at the planning commission level as well as the council now. But the, so, so hopefully there's some way we can send a message that it's not just about you being able to increase density, but also look at the impact that it's going to have on that community if you do increase density. So if we can somehow strike a balance so that the public understands that it's, it's very important that we have planned development, which is, I think, what your whole topic is here. The, I think that's very good and, and there's certain situations where you have to have variables because, I mean, even a property that Shane's developing on all the street and church, I guess it is, there, there's a parking situation there that's hard to explain to the public when they say, well, where are they going to park? And, and, and you know that some overflow will ultimately, if there's an event at one of your houses or apartments, condos, I guess, townhomes. At, at, at one of those, then you would have overflow parking into the streets and, and what we need to do, I think, is be proactive and make sure that we're planning our thorough affairs and our streets through those areas so that they can accommodate roadside parking because it's inevitably going to happen. But it's not a point that we should say it's going to normally happen every day that we're going to have congestion on these streets, but, but you have to, you know, you have to have that variable in there. And I think that's part of what you're trying to present is to allow for Super Bowl Sunday to be a little bit different situation maybe than what the average Monday commute into work would be, so.
Correct. And following up on, on that and, and also back to the mayor's point, one of the discussions that we have had is definitely not no planned developments, but what, what we have started talking with people about when they come in is the nature of their planned development and whether it is speculative or whether it is an actual development. What we're finding is that we do have some applicants who know that a particular zoning district cannot get approved. And so instead they are creating a planned development that may or may not actually be real in order then to, to market that property. And so that's where a lot of the revisions are coming back.
Yeah.
Is as the property's being handed off, being sold, marketed.
And clearly what, what we're talking about almost is when a planned development is being built in phases because somebody will build phase one.
Right.
And then all of a sudden they become financially strapped and say, well, I'm going to sell the remainder of the property off. And then the next person comes in and says, well, I know this was planned to have 75 homes on it, but I figured out how to put 100 homes on it. And then they develop half of it. Their first phase is 50 homes, but then they sell off their other half and then that person comes back and says, well, this was planned on the second planned development to have 50 homes on it, but I figured out how to put 70 homes on it. So, so you just increase density every time you get it handed off through the phases of development. So it's not being developed as it was initially planned and therein lies the devil in the details, I guess.
I mean, the preference, if you're going to have a smaller acreage piece that, you know, with density, planned development is absolutely the way to go. And, and I would argue we've been more lax than we used to be on planned developments. On planned developments, we used to say, show us your book, show us the plans you're going to build, the exact plans. And then when you come through planning to get signed, or building and codes to get signed off, you would take your book over to the, to the planning department, they would check that and sign off on it. So now we have done more general planned developments, which, I mean, there's not anything wrong with that, but the applicant needs to understand that when they're bringing that through the process, there's a trade-off. You're going through a planned development to be able to get a higher density. But with that, that planned development to get the higher density, you're also saying, I'm going to do all machinery, I'm going to do a playground, I'm going to do a pool, I'm going to do an open space and landscaping, I'm going to say these things. And when that comes to us, I think that's a fair trade-off. You're, you're giving more amenities, but you're getting, on that, you're getting a few more units. So you're hoping it evens out. But the part I'm just saying is if an applicant's starting to come in on, on older PU, or planned developments, or ones that they're even looking at, and they're wanting to change those solely for financial purposes, and I get it, but we're not into financial, deciding whether it's financial purposes or not. We're into deciding, is it best for the city? Can we provide services to it? And we take all of that out. So in, in this case, and I felt bad hammering the engineer, but, you know, you look at that development and you're looking at adding 90 townhomes with rear loaded or no garages with 20-foot wide alleyways that we're going to pick trash up and the whole time I'm looking at that going, how the heck did that ever get to us? So that's the part where, you know, getting, I feel bad for the developer because they've gone through the whole process and then it gets to us and we're like, whoa, whoa, whoa. So maybe that discussion, if we do that on the front end, that, that will probably keep everybody a little, a little better.
We will work on the messaging.
No, I mean, y'all do a phenomenal job on getting those things to that point, but this didn't feel very good as it was, as it was, as it was coming back.
Since this is a workshop setting and we have a little bit of licensed brainstorm here, I'm going to take a risk, all right? Does it make it to the paper? I'm just asking a question here, okay? So let's see if I can frame this in a way that's clearly just a question and I, I really, because I don't know, you know, again, you're the professional, but, so in a planned development, you know, I think everyone's understanding of that is that the reason that we have that is for clarity. So the idea of a speculative planned development is cattywampus in my mind. I go, you know, that, I, you know, that doesn't, I don't, I don't like it very much, you know, I just don't like the way that sort of shakes. And that creates a lot of these issues, I think, and I think that's what you're telling us. So, so is there, are there any other municipalities or do you see in the planning world things like, here's the, here's the dangerous part, I'm just kind of, I'm guessing, I'm asking, things like, look, you come in with a planned development that you need to be breaking ground within 12 months. I mean, this is, and this is what it needs to be. This isn't, you know, I mean, and if, if, if it's not done within 12 months, the zoning goes back to what it was. You know, and again, I don't know if all that's good, bad and different, I don't know, but is that...
Would the state change that?
We used to see that. We don't see that so much anymore.
The state changed that three years ago and gave by state law, once a, a development or a plat, or something is approved, you have vested rights now in...
Forever.
Forever.
Yeah, so, so that's good. I mean, that's fine that that's kind of, that's determined for us.
Oh, for the developer.
Well, yeah, for, for all of us to know for clarity, it's determined. But with that, so, so I guess with that in mind, that would accentuate the need to have a, a better grasp on why we are ever going to start the process in the first place.
Right.
Right? Because once that's there and it's there permanently.
Not quite away.
It needs to be, we need to have made sure we've done all of our due diligence on the front end, that we have taken into account the holistic piece of whatever's going to happen around there, so, okay, good.
Thank you.
And I guess, you know, you're, you've kind of jarred my mind here. We need to be very cautious about where they put the amenities because if the amenities that Shane referring to get placed in phase three and they only build phase one, then the, the amenities they got for the density on that property that they never built because they didn't develop phase two and three, they sold that off to somebody else, then all of a sudden you've got a scenario that we agreed to something that really didn't come to fruition because we gave a trade-off to allow them more density, but they really didn't give us the amenities that we said we would get. And then the next person who comes in and says, well, there was an old plan on this, but they've gone belly up and, and we're in a situation now that we're going to develop this, their demands of amenities that they would put would be much lesser than what it would have been when you were dealing with the entire complex. So I, I think there's probably something we need to be careful of, of when we watch where they put the amenities because all the amenities that they're promising winds up in phase three or phase four, then, you know, depending on how close you are to an economic downturn may determine how, how much the reality of that plan even is.
And our staff does a great job of that. We had a, a multifamily complex that came through that the council and planning commission approved a pool being built and the developer went through, built the whole complex and then built the pool and then went for final inspection on the buildings and they're like, no, you, you, you can't do that. So, I mean, I think, once it's approved, y'all do...
One of the basketball court.
Yeah, y'all, y'all do a great job with that. All right, so, thank you, Mr. Anthony.
Thank you.
All right, so Boarding Commissions, you've got risk management. Can we get a motion to reappoint Sean Johnson, Lee Moss and appoint Craig Tindall?
So moved.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
No.
No. Yeah, okay.
Want to? I'm, I'm happy to.
I'm on it.
Oh, you're already on it?
Yeah, you're already on it. So, yeah, we already did that, we did that two meetings ago with the council. You're there for four years, brother.
Two, two, two quick matters. You got a letter or a memo a couple days ago from, from Aaron on reallocation of bond proceeds that have been, that have remained through projects that have been completed or not started. So we've, they've kind of held on to this money for quite some time, some of it. And if you have any questions on those or any discussions, we could take those now and we'll put it on consent for next meeting if everything looks copacetic on there, on, on the list that she sent. You should have it in front of you. I think we put copies in front of you as well.
It would probably be a little helpful, more helpful to me, I'll put it that way. If we were to say police cars, if we put a number of police cars so that I can calculate some figure of what we're spending per police car and, not that it matters, but I'm, I'm sure there's some point that I'm going to say, well, let's look around and see if we can beat this price, but it, but currently, I mean, we've got a number out there and I don't even remember what it was, $180,000 or $880,000, I don't remember what it was, it's on there. But if, if we're going to add a number for police cars that we're going to pay for, just give us a number of what, how many marked police cars we're getting and how many unmarked police cars we're getting.
Right. We can, we can provide more information on those. Now, that's, this is the same number that was in the 2019 issuance, it's to be issued that we discussed. It's just moving from there to old money, from, from prospective new money to the old money that's been around for a bit and out of that 2019 issue. So that's what, what number you're seeing there.
Right.
But we'll, we'll go back and revisit that information so that, so that you have that. Some of it surprised the car, a substantial amount surprised the outfitting that car. So we're running 70, 75,000 a car. So we're running seventy, seventy-five thousand a car now to, to do that. And I've had a discussion with the chief about our take-home program and whether we can sustain that over a long period of time, because cars are getting more and more expensive, and they will continue. Having a pool as opposed to take-home cars for every single officer is something that we just have to look at.
And I, and, you know, at the same time, I guess we can borrow money, I guess, for the police cars and equipment like that, but at the same time, how many years is a police car actually going to last? Because, I mean, you know, you're going, if you're going to pay off that bond in fifteen years, do we still have that police car when you're paying it off? I mean, I guess the question is, is, you know...
Right, there's, there's a definite balance, and that's why we want to, want to go back and revisit.
Yeah.
Craig, if you don't mind, why don't we put this on the consent agenda for the next meeting?
Right.
And if you have any questions between now and then, just get with them, that'd be great. Sorry, go ahead.
Oh, one more question. Christmas gift to employees, Christmas is coming up fast, and we need to be able to program that in, that's why we're talking about it now, even before Thanksgiving. Last year, we did fifty dollars to employees, and I think twenty-five, twenty, twenty-five to part-time employees. The total cost last year is about, just slightly over fifty-nine thousand to the city. For thirteen hundred and thirty-six employees, it'd be slightly higher, because our head count's gone up a little bit. But discussion councils, whether we want to continue to do that. We did gift cards years before. I think it was popular just to have addition to the paycheck last year, or if we want to do something different, if you want to think about it and come back to us.
It's taxable income either way, so...
Either way, it is, true.
At the end of the day, I, I don't want us to tie anybody to saying, "I've used forty-nine dollars of my gift, gift card," and, and just leave a dollar out there. So, so rather than that, I'd rather give them the entire fifty dollars and say, "Spend it where you want to." So I, I like the idea of giving bonuses rather than...
Is that in form of a motion?
So moved, Merry Christmas.
Second, all right, we have a motion, a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? All right.
All right.
We have one beer permit. Ms. Wright, is everything in order on the beer permit?
It is, they need to finish up their building codes inspections, but otherwise, it's in order.
Okay. All right, do we have a motion on approving the beer permit?
So moved.
All right, Rick and Madeline, with a second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? All right. Darren, one question. I lost my phone last night at the house. Can you check my water meter out front and see if you can tell where I left it?
All right. Yeah, I knew that all along. I knew that was going on.
All right, any other business? All right, seeing none, we'll stand adjourned.